Good afternoon and welcome to the Wednesday, what is it, August 8th, meeting in Lincoln City Council. This, like all meetings, is governed by the Open Meeting Act, which is posted at the back of the room. We're here to just talk about adjustments to the proposed budget. And I'm gonna gavel this thing to session. I guess I should've done that already, right?
Good.
So we're in session on that one. And so we have several items, proposals by city council members, and I'd like to go through each one of them. I'd appreciate a motion from someone, and then we'll-
We'll have an open meeting.
He did. He mentioned it.
I got it this time. Yeah, this time I remembered, yeah. It was not a very professional version, but I did it. And so we'll go through that. So Sherri, did you have something you wanted to do before we started? Or you're just gonna be recording for us?
I think so. I'd be happy to record.
Thank you very much.
The chair?
Yes.
On item one, I have a point of order. I thought the other day we agreed that we were not gonna bring forward that item one. John?
We had a conversation about it, but we never really made a definitive motion. This is the one about the remounting chassis, and the fire department said-
I withdraw it. So it's done.
Number one is being withdrawn. Thank you. So let's go to item number two. We're gonna go in seniority, Councilman Camp, and Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, and then Councilwoman Lamb, and then Councilwoman Raybold with their proposals. And we'll just go through each one of them. I'd like to have a motion and a very abbreviated, slightly brief discussion, and then a vote.
I would first move that we not take $4.9 million from the city's cash reserves.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilwoman Camp, and a second one by Councilwoman Lamb. So that's a negative motion? That's a little weird, but I'm... I think the motion to-
To introduce what you have listed here, John?
Well, I think that there are two issues. Number one, I don't support taking it from the cash reserves. But if the council collectively wants to take $4.9 million from the council reserves, then my next position is that it should be contributed to fund the, or reduce the unfunded liabilities in the police and firefighters pension trust.
I think that's what this one says. If we're gonna do it, it goes to the firemen's and police men's trust.
Don't we decide-
No, you're... It lists, you support taking $4.9 million from the cash reserves to be used for the police and firefighters pension trust. That's what it's saying to me.
That's not really true, no, yeah.
If. Like I said, first, I prefer not to take anything out of the cash reserves.
So maybe we should do this as two motions. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Gaylord Baird?
I would like to hear from... In my opinion, that would be a no vote against taking money, rather than just motion to do nothing.
Jeffrey Patrick, City Attorney, Sherri and I were just talking about what stage we're at. I mean, obviously, you have the mayor's budget that was submitted to you. You've had an informal vote, or number of votes, and one of those was to take $4.9 million from the cash reserve. So the question is, what are you dealing with now? Is it the governor, the mayor's budget as modified by you provisionally already? Or is it just the mayor's budget? And I guess, I don't know. This has always been somewhat informal with the idea of giving direction to the finance staff. If that was informal, and that was advisory only, then I would say Mr. Camp's motion is out of order because you haven't voted yet to take the $4.9 million. And the way to do that would be to take it out first. I understand what you're trying to do.
That was why I came back with a two-fold motion.
Right.
Okay, well, I-
Can I suggest a compromise? Let's jump to Lyrian for a moment, and she proposes to take $4.9 million out of the budget, out of the reserve fund. We vote on that, and if it passes, then we go to your number two. That would make logical sense to me.
So we currently have a motion and a second on the floor, though, so I need to deal with that.
I would, I mean, in a friendly environment, we're in this, I'd follow what Roy says, so we-
So he would withdraw his motion, and you-
His motion. So now, I will entertain a motion from, to take $4.9 million from the cash reserve fund to add to the budget.
Okay, but my motion is-
Yep.
It's larger than that. It's a spreadsheet full of uses that are associated with that expenditure.
We're gonna vote on each one of those separately.
Okay.
We're just saying, our, it's, right now, the mayor's budget does not, it is still, it maintains the cash reserve as it is. So what Roy was suggesting is-
You vote on her number one?
You could make a motion to take $4.9 million from the cash reserves, application to be determined subsequently here.
But I'm not comfortable with that. That's not how I would do it. I do sources and uses, and I prepared this, uh...
So I guess the question, point of order, is-
Yes.
Are we going to go through each one of these as you have told us, Chair, to, we're gonna start based on seniority? If that is the case, then John should be the one, and he started to do that.
Okay, I would make a motion-
Yes.
We leave the, regarding the cash reserves, that we leave the mayor's budget stand as it is proposed. And there would be no additional taking of cash reserves.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Camp, and a second by Councilwoman Lamb. Any discussion of that motion? Thank you, Councilman Camp.
It was collateral.
Yeah. Seeing no discussion, would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
No.
Gaylord Baird?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Job?
No.
And Camp?
Yes.
I get to vote, too.
And Christensen? I know, I saw you out there. Motion fails. Three to four.
Okay. With that in mind, then, I would make a motion that if the council continues to support expenditure of $4.9 million from cash reserves, then the entire $4.9 million be contributed to the, to reduce the unfunded liabilities in the police and firefighters pension trust.
Second.
You have a motion by Councilman Camp, and a second by Councilwoman Lamb. Discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
No.
Gaylord Baird?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Job?
No.
Camp?
Yes.
And Christensen?
No.
Motion fails. Two to five.
Okay, so we're, one and two, the twos out of the way, in kind of a slightly tortured method, but we add a number three?
Uh, number three, I think, is moot.
Moot?
Yep, because of the vote we just took.
Okay.
Uh, number four, I'd make a motion, we eliminate the second brine plant.
Second, for discussion?
Got a motion by Councilman Camp, second by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird. Discussion? Councilman Camp, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I, I just think we work with our first brine plant, and I also have a concern of the use of brine on our streets, that it's had such a deteriorating effect, so I see no need for a second brine plant.
Let Jane go first, and I have a question.
Councilwoman Raybold?
I, I believe Public Works Department stated that it is an appropriate application of, of changing the funding to be applied to fire apparatus purchase.
I don't think-
Councilwoman Lamb?
Yeah, I don't think that there was anything in that motion that changed the funding where it would go.
Okay.
It was just to eliminate the second brine plant.
Thank you.
That's what I wanted to talk about, so.
Okay.
Other discussion?
Well, I mean, we're just, I guess, based on our conversation with the Transportation and Utilities Director, it would be very difficult to support a change away from brine without knowing what would be an alternative solution for keeping the streets free of ice and snow in the winter. And so until we have some options to consider, I'm gonna vote no.
Liz, Councilman-
I, I just say, this is not eliminating the brine, it's just limiting the second production facility.
Other conversation? Discussion? Hearing none, would you call the roll?
Eskridge?
No.
Gaylord Baird?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Job?
No.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion fails. Three to four. I'm sorry, I said that backwards. Four to three.
I don't know, point of order?
Yes.
On number five? I don't really see how this is a motion. This needs clarification. That's-
I would agree.
Yeah, we, that's, that's not, so number five is strong?
We did receive email today from Kenda Warnock that gave us information.
I saw it, I just scanned it. I haven't had a chance to go through all of it. Okay, item six, I make a motion, we eliminate the $300,000 for new furniture purchases.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Camp, and a second by Councilwoman Lamb to eliminate $300,000 for furniture. Discussion? Councilman Camp?
And as you know, the Information Services is a revolving type fund where they bill departments for their use of its services, so that $300,000 would filter down to the departments. And as a result, then, it could be used to reduce the budget amount for each of those departments. And give us some property tax relief.
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Gaylord Baird?
You're absolutely right about the Information Services, the way they bill typically. But I think that if it wasn't clarified on Monday, we should have our finance director come up and talk about the source of money for these furniture purchases, because it's not the typical billing rate, as I understand it. Could you come up, Mr. Coleman?
I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna send around to show some of the current furniture and conditions of their office space, so.
Yeah, it looks like city council offices.
Yeah.
Are those the same photos I had taken?
No, these are photos that I took today when I went on a walk-through over there.
Oh, do they show the thing?
It does. That's my chair.
The first one's what we call a sit and stand, so. So from a financial standpoint, these are one-time, this is one-time dollars that are coming through balances. So a reduction, or not utilizing the money, wouldn't decrease the amount of payments that departments are making to Information Services from a revolving standpoint, since these are already balances, funds that have been collected. These are also funds that have been collected by the county, the city, and the PBC. It's about a 70/30 split between the city and the county PBC on that. So there wouldn't be any savings per se generated. The other thing, besides from a financial standpoint, to me, it's an adequacy standpoint. You've got an employee group that's moving to a new facility. There's a number of offices currently, and they're moving more to an open space environment. So if you took this furniture that, you know, various heights and sizes, and you put it within this new environment, it's gonna look like we went to a garage sale functionally and picked up all this furniture and just kinda threw it out there together.
Apartment.
I believe from an employee morale standpoint, this is highly important that we need to provide them with an environment that they want to come to, and with a nice environment. These are all highly dedicated, long-term city employees. The average tenure out there is about 20 years, so. My goal as a department director over this division was to provide them with the best quality work environment that they could come to.
Councilwoman Lamb, then Councilman-
Thank you. No, stay up here, Brandon. Thank you. So my first thought was, some of those employees might have their favorite chair that's about to go away. But my question is, first, do you have, like, a list for us of how many chairs, how many desks that you'll be replacing and things like that? Is that how you use the budgeting? Or did you just have a specific amount that you're asking for, and then you guys are just gonna make that work, or?
So as part of that process, the whole space was designed out, and that includes, you know, the various modules for the, needed to help set up according to the planned designs. I think Bob Wall is here. He could probably speak a little bit more specifically towards that process.
Okay, and then my second question is, you said it coming from fund balances, so is this, again, is this being drawn down from reserves?
This is separate. So, like, I think we've discussed before in government, we do fund accounting. So you have, you know, different funds that are set up. So in this case, it's the Information Service Fund. They have been, they have balances of about 1.9 million. So this would decrease that by about 300,000. In addition, we have a board, ISPC, a council member Gaylord Baird sits on, as well as Commissioner Brinkman. And they help to advise the use of those funds, and we also review that on a, basically on a monthly basis, the fund balance for that.
And so is the, is the county sharing in the cost of the new furniture?
Essentially, because all the funds that are collected from information, for Information Services, come from, you know, the city and the county and the PBC. I think the JPA pays in some, too, so. But functionally, the city pays about 70% of that.
Okay, but you're, so what you're saying is that those funds are in the, the fund balance that you're talking about, the 1.9 million includes money from the county and so forth?
Mm-hmm. So it's a one-time expense.
Thank you.
Councilman Camp, then Councilwoman Raybold?
Well, I'm concerned on several points. It's $300,000, and that's not a minor amount. We've talked about lesser sums, and we looked at things like the bridge that needs a $50,000 gap financing per year. I recognize this is one-time money, but it also then IS, the Information Services, is billing back our departments, 70% city and so forth. If they've got that fund there, that just doesn't mean it needs to be spent. Maybe that needs to reduce other, you know, we've been requesting it software and other things. Maybe that's where some of that fund should go. This is a want. This is not a need. And I appreciate, you know, we want our employees to be in good environments. But I think if you look out in the world, there are a lot of people that have older equipment. And I had Angie go take photos, and I'm sorry, I didn't have him reproduce for this meeting. I didn't know you were gonna do it. But you, you're showing some walls, which doesn't say a lot, but they're, and one desk with a broken drawer. They're, the furniture wasn't that bad a shape or anything. It has good functionalism. And, and then secondly, I've asked, too, about all the equipment we inherited out at the Experian building. That was part of the purchase. The Experian left countless work systems. And I, I haven't heard, you know, I assume Public Works or whatever is using some of it, but what happened to all of that? And so, and we have surplus, and so maybe rather than get the system furniture to match everything else, which is to be a very expensive endeavor, and I've seen that on the Public Billing Commission for years, that we, we represent the citizens and the taxpayers, and we've got to, you know, watch what we're spending.
I think Mr. Wall has more experience probably than anybody in the city-county with system furniture.
So to start with, in regards to the Experian furniture that was part of the MSC purchase, did you ever get there and see that furniture once it was taken apart? And what it, what it evolved into, once all of it got put into a warehouse area?
Bet I did not. I saw it constructed.
So basically, there were piles from the floor to the ceiling of things that no one knew how they fit together. Or there was various brands of office systems furniture that was piled together with each other. And the amount of time and money it would've taken to sort through that and try to figure out what it could be turned into would've been enormous. And at the time, the other part of this was, is we had a whole warehouse full of this furniture. We offered it out to departments, and we sent out what people wanted. But for the most part, we still ended up with a warehouse full of furniture that needed to be moved out in order to bring the LFR training facility into there and some other offices. And so with that, we did what we normally do with surplus, and that is we surplused it out to the public and sold it. And we have both of the purchases that were made from, through our auction company for that. There was, there's a picture of a big pile of chairs and things together here. But basically, even if we would've wanted to keep that, we had nowhere to put it because of the mass volume that was in that building to start with. So that is where all of the Experian furniture went. It was sold on public surplus.
I'm disappointed. That is a 355,000 square building. You could put a Learjet at one end, and it'd be 100 feet off the ground at the other. It is so long.
And it's full. I mean, the, the warehouse space and the things that were in there.
Point of order. I think we've really strayed from the motion.
Thank you. This is a need. This isn't a want, or, sorry, this is a want, not a need. And I, I'm disappointed that that Experian furniture was sold. I-
And I would like to say that I, two years ago, I purchased all of the furniture for the 605 building, which initially came in at, I believe, somewhere around $800,000. And in the, when it was finally said and done, we went through and did the unit pricing that we're doing similar on this project. We ended up with somewhere, I believe, around four. And so the, the 300,000 that's in there is the estimate based on what we're starting with. Our bids are out there right now, and we'll close on Friday for this. I don't know where they're going to come in, but we do have them as unit prices so that we can see how much it will cost for a lateral file cabinet, for a regular file cabinet, for the storage things that they want. And then we can go into what we can find in surplus and replace those if they're in good enough condition for continued use. So I guess I'm just asking you to let us work to make sure that that cost goes down. But the 300,000, what was put out there is the original estimate for it.
Councilwoman Raybold?
And then, Bob, the question was, and I think you sorta answered it, the furniture that's currently in the, the existing department, would that be surplused?
Uh, it, it would. The, the systems furniture that's in there, I did some research on it this morning. And it is Knoll furniture that is older than 30 years old, because that's when we switched over to Hayworth for this office. And that Knoll furniture is no longer made. There is a company who tries to make it as a reman product, but there's been some problems with them. So even if we were to use the office furniture that was in there to make system furniture, there's not enough to make even half of the spaces that have been designed for this facility.
Thank you. I call the question. Councilman Gaylord Baird, I'm gonna recognize her first.
I, I appreciate, you know, the, the goal here is to try and have a lean and efficient budget, so I do appreciate the offer. And I would just say that it's worth keeping in mind that our employees are citizens and taxpayers, too.
Any other discussion? Thank you for coming forward. I'm gonna ask Sherri to step back up, and we will motion in a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
No.
Gaylord Baird?
No.
Lamb?
No.
Raybold?
No.
Job?
No.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion fails. Five to two.
Point of order.
Christiansen, yes.
On item number seven, we're looking at here, there, I don't think there's anything to vote on here, because there's no money. It's a, it's a contingency. And on, once that contingency is realized, then we can take care of it. But there's no money there right now to talk about.
Right now, the budget does have 100,000 a year for the Persian.
Right, but this is not that money.
You're saying we don't know yet until Pershing is just-
That's right. There's no money to talk about until the disposition of the Pershing is determined.
Okay.
Here from now.
No, 15 days we gave Mr. Landis, and he's been working hard on that, so we need a report. Item eight, I move that additional Keno revenues, which are above what we've been projecting, moving forward, apply to reduce property taxes.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Camp, a second by Councilwoman Lamb, that we use Keno money to reduce property taxes in excess of, you guys, you know the details there, right? Councilman Eskridge?
Yeah, I mean, our, our tradition and history of use of Keno funds is, is well demonstrated over time. It's, it's gone for parks properties, it's gone for libraries, and it's gone for human services needs. This is a small amount of money in regard to the property tax issue, but an important amount of money for those organizations, and I oppose it.
Other comments, Councilwoman Lamb?
I have a question for Brandon. You know, when you come to these, you're in the hottest seat of all, right? I wanted to know, how much in revenue did we take in from Keno for the 1718 year?
Well, I can't tell you for 1718.
Oh, 'cause it's not over?
Yeah, we can, we can look back to 1617.
Okay, how about the actual for 1617? I understand that.
Give me about five minutes, and I think we can get that.
Yeah, not, not five minutes, no.
Okay, she can look it up faster. She knows right where it's at, I bet.
Do, 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 do.
I like this. Because the only answer to absurdities is more absurdities.
We can look up individually. Library, looks like it got 669,900.
Okay. No, we're, those are two different figures you're getting, so if you're looking at it, sorry.
It's okay. No worries.
I think it was 4,930,000.
Does John have an idea how much this is?
And I'm sorry, it's on my budget book with me. Is it, like, on page 38 or something, or right in that? I think they're right in that. Pretty easy to find. But I don't have my budget book figures, no.
I received correspondence from a resident who said we should turn Pershing into a roller rink.
I like it.
Roller rink slash BMX track.
Okay, it looks like total Keno revenue was $34,442,960 in 1617.
I'm sorry, which portion was ours? What did we list in the budget as the actual? That's what we listed?
Um, I would have to look at the budget.
Less transfers?
So the 16, that 1617 total is total.
Right.
So then you gotta carve out the prize money, carve out the operator money, the state money, the general fund, admin fee, the county portion, and then you get to the city portion that goes towards human services, parks.
I'm wanting the total city portion. That's all I'm asking for. I'm sorry, I should've made that one.
Careful how you answer, ask questions, I guess.
Excuse me?
You gotta be careful how you ask questions.
I did not bring my budget book.
I'm sorry. I see a calculator over there, but-
The city portion would be $2,652,108.
Okay, and what do we budget for, as the revenue from Keno for 1819?
And that would be?
And I, and I mean show as the revenue. I don't mean actually, how much of that is actually reflected in the budget, like the councilwoman was talking about, but how much should we say we were getting? councilwoman was talking about, but how much should we say we were getting from revenue? What's our projected revenue?
Sorry, that's gotta be, that two million number is low, too.
I think it was around four point nine million.
I'm showing total six million four hundred and ninety-three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
Budget or for the year before?
In the budget.
That's in the budget?
Yeah.
And so, of that, how much is budgeted expenses? How much of that did we budget for expenses?
It's like we have a budget expenses, expenses of three million ninety thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
I'm sorry, three hundred and ninety or three hundred and nine?
Three million-
Nine hundred.
Ninety thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, which I believe some of that would be impacted also by Councilman Gaylord Baird's resolutions as well, that haven't been incorporated into those final numbers yet.
Gotcha. So of the six million four hundred and ninety-three thousand six hundred and fifty that we expect from revenue, we're only spending the three million ninety thousand six fifty plus maybe what councilwoman Gaylord Baird has, if, if her proposal passes?
And I think some of that was a cleanup to, you know, like, I think we've talked about historically, we've under budgeted some on library and parks, so that would bring that number up to that full projected amount.
So if I understand Councilman Camp's proposal, it would, what he's asking is that we would budget anything over the, that comes in over the six million four hundred and ninety-three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars? We would budget that, applying it to reduce property taxes? Is, did I understand that right?
I think so, but clarify, you said there's three point, three million ninety thousand of expenses? And what, when you say expenses, what does that mean?
Okay, so, that would mean the, the payments that were budgeted for human services, the one percent admin fee that goes to the general fund, the two percent payment to the state, the parks and recreation expense, and the library expense.
I thought some of that was in, what you deducted from the thirty-four million to get to six million four ninety-three for the city.
That's essentially the twenty-six million of prizes and the operator's share.
Yeah, so seventy-three percent goes to prizes, and then the operator gets thirteen percent of that.
So I guess to cut to the chase, the question is, how much money are we talking about allocating to property tax relief?
Yeah, well, and, and maybe that isn't the question, because it seems like if we're taking it in right now, we're expected to take in six million, over six million, it's gonna be four hundred thousand, and that's be, that's the city's portion, and we're putting a significant portion of that sixty-five percent against parks, I guess. I, then, taking the rest towards property tax relief, which actually is allowable in the state statute, and then the, in the county guidelines. I, it looks like we're not spending everything we're taking in anyway. We have about three million, seems to me that taxpayers could have been really, really shouting for relief, and that this may be a great opportunity moving forward to offer some property tax relief from Keno funds that appear to be significantly more than we're using. So I will support this measure.
Other discussion? We have a motion and a second, Councilman Eskridge?
Yeah, just, just to clarify, we're talking about a one percent increase estimated of, of Keno funds. So I, I don't think, think it's a significant amount of money. And just looking at the, our budget book, in terms of Parks and Rec, their funds, they're budgeted in this, this budget to receive one million point six, one million six hundred and fifty-one thousand, and that's sixty-five percent of the Keno money is, is that. So, so I think, it sounds like the numbers are, are way higher than they should be.
If I may.
Councilwoman Lamb?
So I don't think that's right. I think when we had a discussion, you said they get to choose how much of their sixty-five percent they're gonna appropriate.
I think in the pass, they have, they have chosen what, you know, kind of that amount as to what threshold to appropriate.
And in this particular budget, Parks and Rec only had appropriated eighty thousand dollars of general, or of Keno money.
That would be just in the operating budget, you need to look, but they have a million X dollars budgeted in the capital improvement program as well. Million ninety-two, is that still right, Lynn? About a million point one?
This is muddy.
Yeah, what's, pardon me, Lynn Johnson with Parks and Recreation. What is in the capital improvement program is a million three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of Keno funds the first year, and then what's in the second year, I think is a million five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And my understanding is that that is essentially most of the sixty-five percent that is allocated to Parks and Recreation. We work very closely with the finance department. Finance department helps us determine the amount that they feel like is reasonable. We don't ever wanna over appropriate. We don't wanna get in a position that we have authorization to spend more money than is actually coming in. So those are the two numbers that are currently in, in the CIP. And then as Sheri said, there's an additional eighty thousand dollars within the general fund budget. Those funds go two different places. We use Keno funds to fund a portion of the grant writers' position, about a third of the grant writers' position, and then we budget thirty-five thousand dollars a year in our operating budget to assist with fund development activities.
Councilwoman Christensen?
Frankly, this issue is, this item is very muddy. We're trying to figure out from the dais how much money we're actually talking about. I think it's not ready to be voted on. We don't know how much money we're talking about here.
I agree.
I agree.
You don't vote.
Still not quite a majority. We still have a motion and a second on the floor, so-
If there is, I mean, if this was delayed, we could come back on the twentieth with, I guess, some more information and clarification as to what the potential impact would be, and maybe help us to further refine our understanding of how this would impact reduction of property taxes moving forward.
Well, and it's not, it has happened in the past historically, that when we get to the final vote, there've been some modifications. And that'd give us a chance, too, for Mr. Waller to tell us about the furniture.
So, having heard those things, I must say, we go ahead and we vote on the motion and second to divert, sorry, yeah.
I'm actually gonna make a motion to delay this.
I, I'm gonna say, we don't really need to. We're just right now voting to give finance direction on where to calculate numbers. We can come back and make final adjustments. It would be better if we didn't, but as Councilwoman Camp said, we can make adjustments. And I'm gonna go with Councilwoman Gaylord Baird first, then Councilwoman Raybold.
It's a point of order, too.
Would you yield for her point of order?
You know, I'm, I'm not entirely clear, John, what you are, I guess, initiating when you say future additional Keno revenues. Could you define that a little bit further and give them better direction on what numbers are actually supposed to bring forward? Should we delay this? I'm not sure. What is additional Keno revenues? Above the budgeted amount, above the annual increase? You know, I'm, I'm not clear where you're going.
Councilwoman Gaylord Baird?
Regardless of any of the specificity that we don't have today, I think it's important to think about the big picture with Keno. Like sales tax, it's a more variable revenue source. It depends on how much people wanna gamble. It is not a required expense like a property tax payment. So, it's a more difficult source to use for something like a property tax reduction. I proposed fully appropriating in the upcoming year because we think we can do that, we think it's very likely in this upcoming year that we could count on seeing the full return of those dollars. But that doesn't mean in future years that that will continue, and one of the reasons why department directors like Ms. Leach and Mr. Johnson typically use this in the CIP for one-time expenditures is because they're not that comfortable using it to fund ongoing expenses. So, even with more details, I'm not sure I could support this.
Councilman Christensen?
Because of what we just discussed, and this is not a typical motion with an amendment or anything like that, I suggest we just pass on this and let John bring it back on the twentieth. There's no reason to vote on anything here.
So we have a motion and a second. Would you consider withdrawing those, or would you like to have a vote on those?
John, is there a motion to pass?
No, you don't need a motion to pass, is what I'm saying. You can just withdraw your motion, and we can move on.
That'd be fine. Just, yeah, one point clarifying. The only thing I think that would help us if you came back on the twentieth is, we get the concept, but when would it be applicable? Would it be as a cap as of the nineteen twenty, and then any future growth would go towards? So, that might be one thing you could think about to help us.
Councilwoman Camp, do you, I'll stay after that. Councilwoman Raybold?
But Brandon, we have to vote on it on August twentieth, correct?
Yes, that's the latest date.
The question to you, John, would you be able to get your specifications on what you're looking for to Brandon in a timely manner? Does it have to be so that we can review it by Friday?
I-
Or does it get posted?
I think it depends, I guess, when the, when would this apply? So, are you applying it at the end of seventeen eighteen? So that puts the cap there, and then eighteen nineteen, you know, maybe we could do some estimates that would show reduction in property taxes by the amount of funds that Keno could potentially generate above that?
This, point of order, this could all be arranged and discussed outside this meeting.
Yeah, I think so.
I just wanna make sure that we get that, those numbers to review in a timely fashion, rather than up at the dais.
I think, I still have a motion and a second. Did I hear official withdrawal of the motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, I was kinda-
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next page of our packet is a list of budget suggestions provided by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird. Councilwoman, would you-
Sure.
I'll entertain motions and-
Well, I'll move that we reduce the general fund cash reserve fund balance over the course of the biennium with two point six million in the first year, eighteen nineteen, and two point two million in the second year. The number's in this spreadsheet for some of the purposes that are listed below. Is that as far as you'd like me to go, or would you like me to just move?
Let's make a motion on item number one and get a second, and then we'll dive back in.
Okay.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, second by Councilwoman Raybold, discussion. Now you can continue, please.
Well, we've already voted on this, let's vote on it again and then move on.
I just wanna clarify, because of the way that the councilwoman was saying, this is a motion just to use cash reserve funds, that, take money out of the cash reserve fund balance, number one.
Well, really, my motions are about the uses. I mean, I've identified sources to be fiscally responsible with how to pay for the things I wanna do, so really what I'd like to move is that we, you know, fund apparatus replacement to the tune of two point five million dollars over the biennium, using cash or fund, cash reserve fund balance to do that.
I would move to divide the question. Just take number one.
That's all it takes, there's no second required. The motion's divided, just so you know.
Okay.
Thank you. I was gonna like, so, we're gonna do the sources first? Divide the question, yeah.
Number one, yes.
Yes.
I think those two can be separated from one another.
So we already have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, and second by Councilwoman Raybold on item number one, and under sources. Additional discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Councilwoman Gaylord-
Well, it just seems quite odd to me that you divide the, I mean, I could have proposed all these uses without identifying sources, which is what we've seen happen, but I'm trying to be responsible.
But we're gonna be on record voting on things, and I would appreciate the opportunity to vote on some of these things separately, not in one big bundle.
Yeah.
That's it.
Other comments?
I would, for this first one, I would just say that we had some discussion earlier in the week about the problems with dipping into the reserve fund of the city, and we heard a couple of things. One, we heard that we're ten percent over what we require to be in the reserve fund, but the other thing we heard a couple of times was that maybe there might be recession on the horizon, that there was concern that the trends of adding to that fund would not necessarily continue. And my concern is if, we were told initially that if it dips below the twenty percent, that the mayor, the, the procedure would be that property taxes have to be increased. And so, in my opinion, it's good to be above the twenty percent, and that's where we're at right now, and so I'm not gonna support taking any money from fund balances.
Councilman Eskridge?
Yeah, question for finance director. This, this amount of money brings us down to what, what percentage are we?
Currently, you're about twenty-five percent. This would bring it down to twenty-two percent.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Raybold?
And Brandon, follow-up, so, projected for the next two years, what does that look like for the reserve for, say, next year when we're looking at budgets again? Would it still be at that twenty-two percent, or?
I think it depends upon the performance of each of those years, so, you know, from a budgetary perspective, you know, there's no net gain, so it just depends on how the various revenue sources come in within that year, and then also the expenditures and how much re-appropriated funds are also expended by departments.
But I guess from what you typically work with, do you anticipate any decrease into that reserve based on what, the numbers that you're seeing that we've budgeted for in the mayor's proposal?
I would expect, at the end of this year, we would probably add to that reserve, and then move into eighteen nineteen, nineteen twenty. I don't expect huge gains to continue be added to that, to that reserve, and with the biggest variable being sales tax. And if sales tax doesn't meet expectations of what we budgeted for, then that'd be the biggest issue we have.
I seem to recall that you had presented some graph and data showing where the, it seemed like, historically, we've had increases every single year.
Yeah, I think historically, you know, we, when we approached this, we did a twenty-five year analysis of sales tax, and, and based on that analysis, it went anywhere from three point two to six. So, it was a range that we've, we were ninety-five percent confident we would fall somewhere within that range. Now, I think the biggest variable that you have, when you don't fall in that range, is when you have a recession. So, if we had a recession, likely our sales tax would dip below that three point two percent. And, you know, currently, I think the last sales tax through July were up two point three percent, so we have some, seen some trending down, at least compared to historically as well.
So Brandon, in the, the budget, did you factor in what the Nebraska legislature is gonna be taking up? It seems like they will, we will hopefully be seeing some additional sales tax revenue with online purchases?
That was not factored in, and I am hoping that, you know, they have provided some clarification to online retailers that, starting January first, retailers have the option to collect that tax and submit it to the state of Nebraska. Now, I don't know how many would exercise that option, because they said it was a may and not a must.
Councilwoman Christensen?
I have similar concerns about the taking of money out of the cash reserve fund balance. Everything I said on Monday applies. My biggest concern is that we, after this biennial budget, we try to do it again, and that would absolutely put us on the road of York, Nebraska, which we don't wanna be on. I intend to support the proposal, but if, I intend to be here next time we do this, and I'll remind everybody that we're not gonna do it again.
Councilman Camp?
Yeah, I, I'm really fiscally concerned if we go from twenty-five to twenty-two percent, that's a, that's a small margin there when you deal with our budget. We talk about getting some increasing amounts, but at a lesser level in the future, but our budget's going up, and so that means the reserve has to go up by nature just to stay at that twenty percent, or twenty percent plus. But our budget's going up, and so that means the reserve has to go up by nature just to stay at that 20% or 20% plus. And so, I mean, that's a significant drop from a 3% from 25 to 22%.
At the end of 1617, and just provide you with the numbers, we had $39,743,085. So if you took 4.9 million out of that, that'd be, you'd have $34,827,875. The bare minimum, according to the policy, is $31,449,824. So you have a little bit of a buffer there before you hit the bare minimum of that 20%.
What are our gross sales tax again, per year?
Per, per year? Was it a little north, 60 million?
I mean, 2 or 3 million drop from 60 million is very conceivable with consumer spending. I, I don't think it is fiscally responsible. And that's why I had my prior motion that adds fiscal responsibility, because at least eliminates some debt that we have on the other side to, to balance it. So I, I can't support this.
Understand. Thank you. I think we've talked about this a bit. I, when I asked Sherry to, did you have, no, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, yes.
I think years of conservative fiscal management of the city make this move possible this year. I don't think it's something that should go on every year, but this seems like the right place and the right time to do this. Our fund balances have been at 22% repeatedly in the past, but before that, they were at 18% in 08, 09, 16% in 9, 10, 11% in 10, 11, 18% in 11, 12, 21% in 12, 13, 21% in 13, 14, 22% in 14, 15, 22% in 15, 16, 26% in 16, 17. With the reapprope included, it's at 30%. So I think that that conservative fiscal management, that slow gradual build allows us to make a cautious rare withdrawal for some of our most urgent public safety needs.
Thank you.
But when you say rare, so you're opening the door here, is what you're doing, and we've never had the door open before. So this is a first step, and it is a very slippery slope. And you mentioned, as Gaylord Baird, in your numbers there in 2011, I believe, or somewhere in that vicinity, that time period, we were down to 11%. So, I mean, there was a huge decline there after the 2008 recession. Several years, they were well below the 20%.
Here's my last comment. Is it, I, I do consider it rare when I'm looking at the age of the fire apparatus, and I think we've agreed that it's, it's old enough to vote, and some of the vehicles, the majority of the vehicles are old enough to drink. So I think we're talking 18 and 20. Yeah, take a look at that. I have it right here. Um, yes, I think it is a rare and unusual time, but I think if this will buy us another 18 to 21 years for us to consider, I think that's a good thing to do. So I will support this.
I'm going to ask Sherry to call the roll. We have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, and a second by Councilwoman Raybold.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
Camp?
No.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two.
Uh, so we're item two, Keno appropriations?
I move that we fully appropriate our projected gross Keno receipts in fiscal year 1819.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, second by Councilwoman Raybold. I really hate to ask this. Is there discussion?
Define what you mean by fully appropriate.
In the mayor's budget, they have a projected amount of Keno gross receipts, and they have appropriated a number that is less than that total. Being fiscally conservative, and I think after having discussions and just talking over how realistic it could be that they achieve their projected revenues, they agreed that we could do this, and I have moving that we fully appropriate those projected gross receipts. It comes to a total of $444,350.
What's that percent of the total?
Um, so I think it's a, is it a four, a four, a difference? Sherry, can you, go ahead, Sherry.
The 4% increase would be for year two. In the first year, it was not, the projected revenue of $35 million was not evenly appropriated across the various transfers and Parks and Library shares. Those, with the exception being Parks and Libraries, where we have always chosen before of fully appropriating that Keno revenue to make sure we collect what we're projecting, and then it would be appropriated for Parks or Libraries in their proportion in a future year. So the transfer payments to the general fund, the state, human services, were budgeted at the full projected revenue of $35 million, but some of that revenue was not appropriated for library, media, and uh, data processing equipment, or for Parks CIP, or that small operating share. Those funds were planned to be appropriated for Parks and Libraries in future years, after the revenue was collected.
Now you're back up to 34, 35 million, when a little bit ago you were talking about 4 to 6.
I'm sorry, I'm speaking of gross proceeds.
But we're really down on the 6 million or less.
The city share, yes. We have a.
3 million, you said, after all those payments.
We have a formula, right, that appropriates.
If there's 444,000, that could be, what, 16, 18% of that 3 million or more.
And again, that's not all for Parks and Libraries. It's the little piece that we're isolating here, that the 444,000 would be for.
But the, that's a huge, that's 12 to 15, 16% of the 3 million you talked about a little bit ago.
That's not the number, that's not the number that's listed here, John. It's just not. We're talking about the numbers listed. I, I mean, you can argue about the percentages and what they mean, but the numbers listed are what they are.
I'm just trying to understand what wasn't, fully, wasn't, what wasn't unappropriated.
I think the Parks and Library, uh, shares of the projected 1819 and 1920, uh, Keno revenue for the city were not fully appropriated.
I see no one else wishing to comment on this item. We have a motion in second. Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
Camp?
No.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one.
Item number three.
I move that we increase the projected Keno revenue to a total of 4% growth over the prior year in the fiscal year 18, oh, sorry, 1920. That would yield $438,350 in the second year of the biennium.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, second by Councilwoman Raybold.
This represents a 1% increase. It had been projected at 3% growth. After discussing, discussions with the finance team, they felt that it was all right to up that projection to 4%.
Councilwoman Lamb.
Yeah, Sherry, um, I'm just wondering if you can tell me where the Keno revenues for, uh, that were projected for in 1920, were they fully appropriated?
No, no, they were not. The amounts were equal. They were similar to 1820 in Parks CIP. We had, um, increased the appropriation of Keno revenue $200,000.
Okay. So, and this extra, this is just the growth, it doesn't fully appropriate all the funds that we expect to receive, is that right?
Then the funds are now appropriated fully for the projected amount of money. The Parks and Library shares are, this would distribute them equal to the transfers for the state, the general fund, human services. Again, fully appropriated, this is our projection. So this would fully appropriate the projection. We don't know what the actual revenue is going to be.
Okay, so this amount fully appropriates the projection?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And actually increases it 1%.
Councilwoman, uh, Camp.
So we hadn't been, so the 3% projection would be part of this 438, is that what you're saying? Or is this?
A portion for Parks and Libraries, because that was not fully appropriated in the mayor's recommended budget.
So the 438 is a 4% versus there wasn't anything before.
This would represent the total.
If this is the 1% increment, or?
It's four, this is 4%.
It's 4%.
Well, um.
It's not 1%.
It's not a 4% increment. It's that, let Ms. Wolf elaborate, but you have Keno increasing in year two by 3% over the prior year, correct?
Well, actually, as I'm recalling, we did not, and that was what your, uh, motion did, was increase it, because we had budgeted the same amount of revenue in the second year.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, I'm prepared to have the clerk call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
Camp?
No.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one.
We're now down to the uses section.
Okay. I move that we appropriate $2.5 million for fire apparatus replacement, according to the delineation in the spreadsheet, with that being spread over the biennium, 772,000 in the first year, 1.772 in the second.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, second by Councilwoman Raybold. Discussion, Councilwoman Christensen.
This item is why I voted yes to transfer the money out of cash reserves. I'm going to support it.
Other discussion? Councilwoman Eskridge.
Yeah, and again, we, we did receive information today from, uh, Chief Warnock about, uh, the equipment needs indicates a need for, what is it, 10 engines and 2 trucks, and, uh, gives the, uh, report card, which, uh, glad I didn't have a report card like that, and it's, uh, it's not good. That we need to do something to replace a large number of our equipment.
Other discussion?
Yeah, this is an important boost in the arm of our, just to help get our fleet healthy.
Seeing no other conversation, would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Item two, fire station modification and repair.
I move that we appropriate, uh, in fiscal year 1819, 500,000, followed by the same amount in fiscal year 1920 to support fire station modification and repairs. This is, again, to take care of a lot of structural problems, um, cracks in the foundation, and as well as the issue that, um, many of these stations were built before the first, the force diversified, and it will help create better sleeping quarters, uh, to reflect, uh, different genders in the, in the firefighting ranks.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, second by Councilwoman Raybold. Additional comments from the council? Seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
Camp?
No.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one.
Item number three, body cameras.
I move that we appropriate $10,000 in fiscal year 1819 for LPD Body-Worn Cameras Initial Phase Implementation Program.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, second by Councilwoman Raybold. Discussion.
Could we just include, uh,
Number four?
Number four, yeah, number four in there, because one without the other makes absolutely no sense.
Yeah.
Cannot work.
I'd be happy to add them together.
Let's just consider that one motion, yeah, the motion for three and four.
Which includes $90,000 for a, a body worn camera server for video storage to help them assess the, evaluate, and evaluate the effectiveness of this tool with, um, some of our teams.
Councilwoman Lamb.
Yeah, thank you. Um, well, I appreciate the thought behind this. It is only a, a pilot program, and, and I am, I'm concerned that, and on one hand, we're saying this is going to be a rare drawdown from the reserves for public safety. This is something that's, is again, it's a want and not a need in my estimation, and, um, I, so I believe this is something that we should look at, um, as a city, but we should look at it in the budget for, um, Lincoln Police Department, and, um, so I will not be supporting this.
I understand. Other comments? Councilman Camp.
Yeah, how many on, on the, uh, camera initial phase, 10, uh, the body worn, you had 10,000, how many would that be?
I believe it's 10.
Chief, would you help us answer, I'm sorry, Councilwoman?
I believe it's 10, but I defer to the chief.
10.
10.
And so then the, the 90,000 is for 10 servers to support those, or is that?
No, it's for the servers with the adequate storage, not only for those 10 cameras, but for the current cameras that we have, inclusive of storage for our in-car cameras, which is throughout our entire fleet. So that 90,000 is an upgrade to purchase a new server and storage in, in the future. If, um, we find a sustainable funding model for the body worn camera to go forward. So the 10,000 is just a, a beta test, a pilot project, if, if you would.
Did I understand you say you already have some body cameras?
We do. We currently have, I believe, five in operation, and we have ordered 12. I think 11 or 12, based upon private donations from a fundraiser that was a year and a half ago.
And how many to get to capacity would you need?
240.
And you said this would be a beta test, but if you already have five, why would it be a beta test?
Maybe that's a bad term. It's an additional testing based upon, there's, there's several different models where we're going to deploy these. We're going to deploy them in our downtown bike officers, which are as a matter of routine and practice, on foot, patrol, not close to their cruisers, where they would enjoy the benefit of having the cruiser itself recorded. We're having it, uh, for our Canine Officers. Our Canine Officers are, again, oftentimes on foot, deployed. Um, in that particular circumstance, the remainder of, um, the ones that we've ordered, we're trying to figure out how to best implement them. Can we individually assign? Are they robust and rugged enough to survive using one shift after another? Those are the kinds of things that we're trying to evaluate, John, and those are good questions.
Councilwoman Christensen.
I, I would remark that the five you have is the alpha test. This is the beta test. Okay, and, and then I'd also say I support this because, um, we're going to get there where we have all the cameras. But this is a protection, safety issue for the public and for our police officers, and it will protect the city budget, because it will inoculate us against frivolous lawsuits and complaints against the police department.
And that's part of what we are studying. Does this have an impact? Can we show a measurable demonstrated impact on the number of complaints we have and the disposition of those particular complaints, whether they are sustained versus unsustained or unfounded? Because if we have clear and convincing evidence that something that rose to the level of complaint did exist, then it would be sustained, and if it did not, it would be exonerated. And one other particular part of this is for us, we don't want to buy a large technology product all at once and then have to replace it all at once. And so that, this goes into that phased-in approach, so.
Councilwoman Lamb, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Um, you said you ordered 12 additional.
It's approximately 12 to, yeah.
Does, does this supplant this, or those, or would this be in addition to those?
These are in addition. These 10 would be in addition. We've already ordered those based upon the generous donations of the citizens of Lincoln, uh, who chose to contribute to that.
So here's my question, because this is unprecedented in what we're doing. Is this a critical need of the department?
I believe it is a critical need, um, and the reason is that we need to migrate towards full implementation across all of our uniformed services to have these devices. But once again, I go back to, one, we need to make sure we can sustain it, two, that it has the measurable impacts, and, three, I, I just, I don't want to do it all at once, because I don't want to replace it all at once.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman?
That, another element, it's, it's, you know, you've raised excellent arguments. I think it's also a staff morale issue, and I, I think that this is a hard time to, to be a police officer, and this, like you said, um, not only protects the public, which it does, but it also helps those officers feel more secure when they hit the streets.
Thank you. Would you call the roll? Thank you. Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Show? Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, nothing.
I forgot to say thank you, Chief, I'm, let me go back and do that. Thank you, Chief. Item number six, no, five.
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 I move that we appropriate $270,000 to purchase six LPD cruisers to support the new, the growth of the LPD staff, and the addition of SROs to our force.
Second?
Motion by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, second by Councilwoman Raybold. Discussion of the support for the interlocal agreement. Seeing no conversation, would you call the roll?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Item number six.
Okay, I propose that we appropriate $1 million to create a Parks and Recreation Challenge, Community Challenge Grant Fund, to help match community gifts to significant capital repair and replacement projects, uh, things that are listed, for instance, in our Quality of Life Bond CIP category, uh, to try and inspire, uh, some of these, the completion of some of these projects in, in a public-private partnership way.
Second?
Motion by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, second by Councilwoman Raybold. Discussion. Councilwoman Christensen?
Okay, um, I had some comments the other day, to make this brief, they still apply. Uh, I don't think this raises to the level of, of, uh, emergency, like our fire apparatus does, and I don't think it raises to the level of a critical need like our pension does. Um, having said that, I support Parks and Recreation, but not to the tune of a million dollars out of our cash reserve fund. We've already voted to take it out of the reserve fund, so I'm going to offer an amendment that this money go into the Police Fire Pension Fund instead of Parks and Rec.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Christensen, and a second by Councilman Camp to amend this motion and divert these funds to the Fire and Police Pension Fund.
Correct.
Discussion of the amendment. Councilman Eskridge?
Yeah, briefly, um, certainly supportive of the need of the Police and Fire Pension, but there are critical needs of Parks and Rec facilities, and, uh, probably in all of, for the district representatives in all of our districts. I know for me, one of the most critical needs is, is the Airpark Rec Center, which, uh, has been there since there was an airbase. Uh, it's located on the wrong side of Northwest 48th Street. All the residents lived on the west side of that street, and the rec center where kids have to cross a busy street to go and play is on the east side. Uh, we need more creative ways to, to replace some of the facilities, to improve the facilities. I, I get the need of, of pension, we received from Finance Department, uh, all of the work that we've done on adding funds to the pension over the last 15 years or so, uh, we're contributing, this year we're contributing 20 times more than the council contributed to the pension fund, uh, approximately 20 years ago. Uh, so I, I think, I think we're doing well, we're, I think it's at 83% funded, and that's stepping up little by little every year. Um, we, we got to keep after it, other, this is a big need we have right now.
Councilwoman Raybold?
You know, I, I agree with that completely, because if you look at the Police and Fire Pension Fund information, you know, it originally was only at about 1.2, I'm sorry, about 3.24% of our, our budget. Now, it's up to about 11.17% of our budget, and next year, 10.99% of our budget, and we are looking at 82% of, uh, of funding, and next year it looks projected to be at 83%, so, um, based on the budget that is before us. So I, I don't see any urgency to, to transfer the funds to, um, the Police and Fire Pension at this time.
Councilwoman Gaylord Baird?
Just add that the fiscal year 1820 biennial budget will, will, has the city contributing 16.7 million dollars to the Police Fire Pension Fund, and we should do that. We have a responsibility to our employees, and this is a big deal for our community's fiscal health. I do not take issue with the, um, importance you place on this at all, Councilwoman Camp, uh, but I do think that, uh, I've heard, you know, my colleagues talk about the need to, um, be mindful of the property tax bill, and this fund for community challenge grants is an innovative way to try and, uh, avoid going forward with future GO bonds, uh, for big capital expenses. Right now, the items imagined for this, uh, kind of a grant, uh, are of that kind of a level that, that would likely require bonding, and rather than go that route and increase the property tax rate, I think we should try and be creative and innovative, and, uh, work with our private partners and philanthropists in the community to try and get some of these projects across the finish line.
Thank you, Councilwoman Christensen.
I just want last comment, uh, we are spending a lot of money on the Police Fire Pension Fund, and if we could wave a magic wand and bring ourselves up even, we would have millions of dollars more to spend on all the things we want, and the reason we don't is because we don't pay it off our debt fast enough. We're paying, this is 8% interest, this million dollars will provide the city with $80,000 every year to spend on whatever we want in the general fund. I'd spend it on Parks and Rec, but that's $80,000 every single year going forward for decades, until we pay off the debt, so.
Thank you, Councilman Camp.
Just historically, too, I appreciate the, that, that what Ms. Raybold said on the contribution levels, because when I came on council 19 years ago, it, it was a low amount, and we were 105 to 108% funded, and what happens, just like we're seeing on the, uh, supposed excess in the, uh, cash reserves, is when there's an excess, it gets spent, and that's one of the difficulties with government versus setting aside to whether the market downturns that happened in 2008. We did a, an accounting shift to get us up from 60 to 80%, and that's what it was, there's no new dollars in there from that 13th check fund, and, again, the pension committee that advised us gave us, that was just one of a number of things to do, none of which we've done, to shore up the Defying Benefit Plan, and I, that is, is one of the highest priorities you can give, and that goes to our police and firefighters.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
I think it's worth noting that in the spreadsheet that was sent to us, um, and Councilwoman Raybold was mentioning the percentage of budget, it's actually percentage of levy, and if you look back at the levy that the city had for property, uh, during the years that the pension fund was over 100% funded, it's much higher than it is today, and I mean, that, that's just something we have to acknowledge, it was considerably higher. We've, we've reduced our property, uh, our city levy, uh, from a high point in 1993, '94 of .51990 to today's level, it's .31648, or to, yeah, 3.031648.
Let it go, John, just let it go.
Well, you're the only one, you're going from percentages to dollars when you want to, and vice versa on other arguments. Uh, we all know what has happened with the county reassessment, it's just exploded the property values, so dollar-wise, the city is collecting, has always collected more than the prior year, substantially, so those mill levy adjustments were very much in order.
Thank you. I want to ask the clerk to call a roll, please.
This is on the amendment.
Yes, thank you, this is the amendment.
Eskridge?
No.
Gaylord Baird?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Show?
No.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion fails, four to three.
Councilwoman Lamb?
Like to make a motion to amend to, um, actually take this million dollars and put it into, uh, additional fire apparatus replacement. Um, once again, I think there's a couple of things going on here. We're talking about something that should be extremely rare, that's putting us on a slippery slope, and I've already heard some of the slippery stuff, because now we've gone from, hey, this is a rare for a, for a, uh, emergency, public safety need, to now hearing in this last discussion that somehow the challenge grant for the parks is a critical need, and so, critical needs can creep in, and I think this is Councilwoman Christensen's point, is that, once you go down this road, there are things that are gonna, can creep in, and we're talking about lowering the reserves 3% in one fell swoop, 3%. And if that happens again, right now, we were told by Finance it will be down at 22%, if that went down 3% again, that would trigger the need for a property tax increase. If the same thing that's happening today, uh, taking that money out of funds happens again, it could go down even at today's levels, so.
Are you gonna wait on a second?
I'm sorry.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, and so, I, what my, I'm saying, hey, listen, I get it that fire trucks, uh, fire apparatus is a, is a critical need, and we've all acknowledged that, and are very much in support of that. Um, if this fund is to be removed, and it's not to be put into, um, the pension fu- excuse me, pension fund, because we don't feel the need to, uh, everyone doesn't feel the need to pay down that debt, um, I suggest we at least put it towards what we have acknowledged is, uh, a public safety need that is critical. Um, I would note that in this first year, fiscal year 1819, the proposal, um, what we just passed for fire apparatus replacement was, uh, 772,000 of the funds, and now the proposal is a million for, um, for parks, and I would just, um, I would just like to see that, I'd rather go that, see that go towards fire apparatus and replacement, I think that's more appropriate, and it's a better move for the citizens of Lincoln.
Further discussion on the amendment?
Well, um, a couple things. Um, I clearly agree that fire apparatus is a critical need, and we're making significant strides in improving the health of the fleet with these changes. Um, we do have a, a resolution that's, um, been delayed for a different date, that we are still looking at a, a potential alternative source for additional fire apparatus, the, um, the excess in our public safety, um, quarter cent sales tax dollars. So that's, that's still an outstanding issue, that, that may be a significant source of funding for apparatus, and I think it's just important to keep in mind that, uh, in hard economic times, the parks budget is on the chopping block and has seen significant cuts over, the years. Uh, there is a big gap in taking care of those assets, and these assets, they aren't just amenities, these are how we promote our city to outsiders, its economic development, it's, of course, health, it's physical health, um, giving people places to exercise and recreate, and it's, it's also free, it's one of the ways we serve our low-income residents in a significant way, uh, people who can't afford access to private pools, uh, gym memberships, they can, they can recreate in our parks and on our trails. Um, and, you know, they're also public safety. I mean, what Councilwoman Eskridge mentioned when he talked about the Airpark Rec Center, these are facilities that keep kids off the streets in those critical hours after school, when they can be either the perpetrators or the victims of crime. So, our parks are wearing so many hats, and they've lost a lot of their funding over the years, we are trying to get them back to a place where they can be whole, and we're trying to do it in this way to leverage, make our dollars go further. This is, um, 80% of my proposal is, is using funds for public safety, and I think that it's reasonable to put 20% towards, uh, Parks and Rec, which, again, also has a public safety component.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Raybold?
Just one last thought, you know, we had public hearings last week, and I would say more than half of the folks that testified, they testified in support of maintaining funding for Parks and Recreation, a whole slew of, of different programs, from Parks Foundation Chair, the Head Coach of the Swimming, Dog Parks, Friends of Wilderness Park, um, and Bob Ribery, who has been on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for 17 years, was very supportive of this as well. So the majority of the, the folks that testified and offered their opinion, which we listen to, wants us to maintain our parks.
Councilman Camp?
Well, in that last comment, I think we had 22 people testify, or was it 20?
I think it was 15 in favor of the budget.
I don't know how many total people testified, so not even 20 people, so that's, I appreciate those people and their views, but let's not put this whole justification for a million dollars on 15 people. Uh, you know, and we, and I'm, we have done a lot to restore funds to the parks, so at some point, I think we need to recognize that and quit saying how it was cut so much in the past. I also say that it's, it's really concerned me over the years, and I've said this to Mr. Johnson many times, that we need quality over quantity. And when we can't even, you know, we're supposedly getting endowments and maintenance funds in even new areas, yet we have medians to the airpark, airport that were disasters. And we've got other areas, we've had to beef up things on the P Street development. I, I got another email today on Roberts Park, just a disaster at 56 and A Street, it's just gone on, we talk about needing the parks for safety, so it's not safe to be in the unmaintained parks that we have, and so you talk about the value of them, but if they're not maintained, then the usefulness is not there, and so we have got to readdress in what we do, we do well.
I, I have to comment on that, because, John, you just made Larian's point, because this money is for public.
I was, yeah.
This is for challenge grants, and we were told challenge grants by those same testifiers, and Ms. Raybold said, wanted to spend it for capital, and that the city does the maintenance. So this is not for maintenance. It was for maintenance of capital, capital property, but what I'm saying, I agree with you, John, but you made your point for her, that's all I'm saying.
So we have a, an emotion to amend by Councilwoman Lamb, and second by Councilwoman Christensen, we're voting on that motion to amend.
Eskridge?
No.
Gaylord Baird?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Show?
No.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Now for our?
Motion fails four to three.
Now for our original motion to move 1 million to Quality Life Challenge Grants. Councilwoman Christensen?
Having failed at both of those, I'm going to support this.
Thank you, Councilman Christensen.
And I would just add that it, uh, you're saying, you know, I've heard the priority of this questioned, but I've also heard people talk about the priority of keeping property taxes in check. This is one way we can do this, and this is an innovative and creative way to do this.
Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
I'm gonna call BS, not so fast.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes, and.
Lamb?
If we can keep it professional.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
No.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two.
Did she call your name?
What?
Did she call your name?
Yes.
Okay, I was, I dozed off, I'm sorry. Uh, we're down to number seven now?
Can we just do seven and eight together?
That'd be great.
I'd like to have a.
Am I gonna have problems with that, if I move seven and eight together? Okay, I move that we, um, appropriate the Keno to its, actually. These, these all relate to the Keno, I mean, you could do seven through 14 together, actually. These all relate to the increased Keno projections, it's just the automatic implementation of that revenue.
Let's do it.
Okay, let's, let's move seven through 14.
Motion by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, second by Councilwoman Raybold, on the appropriation of the Keno funds. Discussion, you, anyone? Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
No.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you, and our next sheet of paper, page number three, will discuss Councilwoman Lamb's suggested budget changes.
Thank you. Um, I would move that, um, the Finance Director hereby be directed to reduce the property tax rate in the event that the certified valuation is greater than the 4% increase projected to support the mayor's needed, projected needed to support the mayor's recommended budget, uh, that was released in June 2018. Property tax revenue of $60,774,362 is appropriated in the mayor's recommended budget. is appropriated in the mayor's recommended budget on a valuation of twenty-one million, or excuse me, twenty-one billion?
Hundred thousand, million, billion, yeah.
I'm sorry, three-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, million, nine-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, three, and a property tax rate of point three-one-six-four-eight. Should the certified valuation be greater than that number?
Thank you.
The tax rate will be reduced to limit the property tax revenue that has previously been appropriated to sixty thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-four.
A million.
Sixty million, thank you, seven-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars.
That's the motion. Waiting for the second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Camp. Would you care to?
Thank you. I feel this, as I said before, relates back to the fact that the proposed budget was introduced to the public in June of this year. It indicated that the amount needed, that I spoke about, was the amount needed to fund the mayor's budget. That's what the taxpayers were told, the amount of their money that would be needed to fund the budget. We're told the other day that if it comes in greater than that, it goes into this fund balances that we've just been talking about evidently. My colleagues feel like there's enough to draw down three percent of it. And so, I say that at this point, we should keep our agreement with the taxpayers that we not take more of their, their money than we said we were going to need in order to fund the mayor's budget.
Councilman Christensen.
I have a question for finance. Because my understanding, maybe I'm completely wrong on this and been, but throughout all the adventures we've had over the last three years on budgets and levies, it's, isn't, don't we just set the levy to match the budget? Or do we set it in excess of the budget? Because I had, I was forced to vote yes on something I wanted to vote no on because I had to set the levy to match the budget.
Okay. So I'll give you an example, I guess, and this is a large example. But last year in the mid-biennium, there was a forecast that included like a two percent, and it came in at eight percent. So, you know, that was the, that change resulted in recommendations coming forward for mid-biennium adjustments. Kind of the same case here, but on a much smaller scale, is that we, you have a recommendation with a budget for sixty million, seven-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars. If you chose to keep it at that amount and follow this resolution, then that would, in a sense, decrease the amount of tax rate needed. So, on the twentieth, when you vote, you are voting to set the tax rate, okay? Then when you come back in September, you are voting to levy that tax rate. What, that vote in September is the ministerial duty of vote, of the votes taken on August twentieth. Is that clear?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Councilwoman Lamb.
So, the, but the levy that we set on, that we vote on, as long as, we can't go less than what it requires to set the budget, to fund the budget for the levy. But the, if the numbers come in on the twentieth greater than what the mayor had projected in June, then we won't need as high a levy as maybe in our first documents.
And that's what, yeah, we talked about that. You know, essentially, you would be, you could, there's two options. One, you could lower that tax rate.
Right.
The second option is reducing the amount of prior year balances that you are counting on for the eighteen nineteen, nineteen twenty budget.
Which would end up in the fund, general fund balance.
No, not necessarily, because.
That's what you told us the other day.
Well, so, let me clarify real quick. You, we can only appropriate ninety percent of the balances, and then, you know, that remaining amount goes into the reserves.
Okay.
And then, when you're budgeting, since you can only count on that ninety, the city has always counted on a portion of the prior year balances to fund the current upcoming budget. So you're basically kind of counting on prior year reserves to help balance the current budget. My, from a financial standpoint, I think, I told you also that we have not budgeted delinquent revenues in the past. Since that is an ongoing revenue source, and I wanted to recognize all ongoing revenue streams in this budget, we have a budget of two-point-eight million in the general fund on the revenue side for delinquent property taxes. So, in the past, that was helping to add to surpluses. Now that is gone. You have revenues on the top side, you have expenditures on the bottom side, which helped add to the public safety funds. So my fear is you, it's going to be a much tighter year-end, which I've also told you. And so, my recommendation would be just to lower the balances when we get to August twentieth, based off of the assessed values that we receive.
So, in putting this into effect, it required that the, the general provision that you have for appropriating balances more than what was projected, that that would, you would have to add an exception in the, in the case of, of general funds.
Not understanding your question.
No, I'm sorry. So you have a provision, generally, there's a provision in our budget resolution that indicates that any additional funds that come in under any of the taxing funds would be allocated to the appropriate fund balance or department. And so this would require putting in an exception for those that fall under property tax revenues.
And I think what I'm recommending is that you take, if there is, so we're budgeting on a four percent, if it comes in at four and a half, that you take that, reduce the appropriated balances as a cushion in the budget for, in a case of a recession, in a case of other things, to make sure that we, we continue to have balances growing. As John mentioned earlier, when you have expenditures growing, you have to keep increasing your balance growth at the same time.
Thank you.
I'm going to call myself for a question. I, I don't have to do that yet.
Just talk, that's all.
Just talk, yeah. I'm, I have some concerns about, as we've talked about earlier, drawing down from the fund and the possibility of an adjustment in our economy. I think the, and maybe I've got this way off base, but when we see that property valuation increase and we maintain the same levy without lowering it, that's the growth we talk about that funds the future of the city. And I feel that by lowering that levy, we're negating any growth that happens, and it limits how much we can invest in our community and help our community grow. I'm, yes. And having said that, I'm going to ask you to call the roll. Thank you.
It's, it's.
Yes, Councilman.
I appreciate your comments, but it's the growth that has allowed the budget to increase, so that's.
It's kind of a chicken and an egg, a little bit, yeah.
Well, what this is saying is, we've tried to estimate, and then we're reconciling the estimate, and if we estimated too high, it's saying, well, then let's lower the mill levy because we said what we needed, so let's set the mill levy. I think that's what Mr. Christensen said at the outset, we set the mill levy to fit it. Because we're not, until we get the county assessor's actual valuations.
Yes.
We don't know. But the, the growth has already been incorporated into projects and everything in the city and the CIP.
Councilwoman Raybold.
Well, I'd like to keep our commitment to our property taxpayers. We, we've agreed with what the mayor is proposing, that there's going to be no property tax increase. Reality is, Lincoln keeps growing. No matter what we do with our budget, Lincoln will continue to grow. I think we are trying to be as fiscally responsible as possible and invest in those things that will help the city continue to grow and continue to grow our tax base. So I, I would like us to, to go ahead and move forward and, and wrap this up because our commitment is not to have any property tax increase, and I think that's the one I would like to live up to.
Okay. Would you call the roll, please? On, this on the motion to adjust the rate.
Correct. Number one.
Eskridge?
No.
Gaylor Baird?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Schob?
No.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion fails four to three.
I'd like to make a motion that any general fund delinquent property tax revenue in excess of the two-point-eight million dollars that's been appropriated each year to support the mayor's recommended budget in fiscal years two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and nineteen twenty is hereby transferred and appropriated to the street improvement fund.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Lamb, second by Councilman Camp.
Just, just to be clear on this, we're not talking about two-point-eight million dollars. We're talking about anything in excess of two-point-eight million dollars.
Correct.
Whatever that might be.
From delinquents.
From delinquent, yes, that they receive. In other words, my understanding is that August twentieth, they get a report of, here's the taxes that have been paid, and then throughout the year, they accumulate, funds are accumulated from delinquent, people who've paid their taxes in delinquent, and that they have this year budgeted into, and next year, two-point-eight million dollars each year for those anticipated delinquent funds. This is saying anything over that should be transferred and appropriated into the street improvement fund.
I have another question for staff. Where's that two-point-eight million dollars projected to go?
So that money goes into the general fund, and it's generally to the whole pot, so.
All right. Good. But it, would it upset the budget and cause changes in the budget, as we're looking at it right now, if anything in excess of that two-point-eight million went to street improvement fund?
I don't think it would upset it. I'd say, we typically don't earmark specific revenues. I think there's only one exception to that case right now, which is the TIF revenue. And there's language improved, included in prior budget resolutions that that, anything above two-hundred thousand be earmarked to, or problem properties and affordable housing. And that's, I guess, is just a buffer against all the different fluctuations in total revenues within the general fund.
Councilman Camp?
Well, we, we did have, it may have been before you came on as Finance Director, four years ago, I had made a motion which the council agreed upon, that excess revenues would go to the police and firefighters pension. And I think it amounted to a quarter of a million dollars or something.
I don't remember the amount, but I think you specified sales tax. Wasn't it additional sales tax revenue?
It was additional revenue. I was just sober, but.
Councilman Eskridge, can we put this money toward that reserve fund that we talked about, to rebuild it, to keep it above that percentage? Would that, if someone were to come up with that idea, would that be an appropriate use of the money, and appropriate use of the money?
If, you know, if money comes in and it's placed within the whole general fund, and that money goes to fund all the services included within the fund, and expenditures are less than revenues, then that automatically basically goes into the reserve account.
To bring that percentage back up to where we were.
Yeah, it would add to that.
We have a motion and second. Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
No.
Gaylor Baird?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Schob?
No.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion fails four to.
And our final suggestion to the budget for adjustments was from Councilwoman Raybold.
Um, I'd like to move that we take re-appropriated funds and transfer them to new bus shelters and benches to, to help get us caught up in that one as well.
Motion by Councilwoman Raybold, second by Councilman Christensen. Discussion.
It's obviously responsive to what we heard in the public hearing. Thank you for bringing this forward.
Councilman Christensen.
What I said before.
Okay. This is, this is one of those things from the side. Any comments from the council? Councilwoman Lamb?
Well, I just wanted to clarify because she said re-appropriated funds, and I'm sorry that we take re-appropriated funds. This is basically a transfer.
This is money that.
Mickey explained, I had misspoke it the first time, and Mickey corrected it.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm trying to keep it corrected.
Thank you. Thanks for clarifying.
You bet.
Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
I move a adjournment. To address today before we adjourn.
Just, sorry. Just a process, we'll incorporate all these into the final schedules and have that budget resolution before you with all these changes incorporated. The twentieth meeting will be the last regular meeting that you have to vote on adopting this budget. The following week would not work according to, the twenty-seventh would not work according to the charter.
Why?
You have to adopt it five days prior to the end of the fiscal year. The end of the fiscal year is the thirty-first, so you would have to adopt by Sunday.
Thank you.
Motion's on the floor.
Second.
I do.
Okay.
No, we have to vote.
I don't want to vote. Okay. Motion to adjourn. Yeah.
If we walk out, that's a vote.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb? Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Sometimes we vote, sometimes we don't. Sometimes we just leave. Meeting adjourned.